I'm gonna go ahead and call the city council regular meeting together for Granberry. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 20th, 2034. We have now called a order and the invocation will be delivered by Chaplain Terry Lubin. He's chaplain for our Hood County Sheriff's Office. Chaplain Lubin?
If you would pray with me. Heavenly gracious Father, Lord, we praise you and we honor you, Lord. You have blessed us so deeply today with such a wonderful day. Lord, we pray for your presence here tonight and let your Spirit hover over these men and women in this room. Lord, for those that you have placed in positions of authority in decision-making, Lord, I pray for your wisdom and your knowledge and your insight for the decisions that they'll make. Lord, I pray for our first responders, for our police department, our sheriff's department, those state troopers who keep our highways safe, for our emergency medical technicians and our volunteer fire department. Lord, I pray that you keep them safe and protect them as they protect and serve us. Lord, more importantly, I pray for your wisdom and for your knowledge. Lord, guard our minds, our thoughts, the words that we say and the actions that we take, so that at the end of the day, Lord, everything that we've said and done would glorify and honor you. It is the desire of our heart, Lord, to hear your words. Well done, good and faithful servant. And we ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Phil Stanwell pledges allegiance to the flag of the United States and then to the state of Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas' flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Thank you, Chaplain Lubin. Okay. We're gonna move to proclamation and presentation. And the first item that we have for one is the presentation of a conceptual plan for Granberry Ace by Mr. Troy Crossen. Mr. Kaufman, do you want to introduce that place?
Troy is here and he's given us some pictures. If you'd come up, here's a picture of elevation of what he's planning on building. Tell us a little bit about it, sir, and welcome. This is a conceptual plan that he's talking to us. No action needed. It's just education piece for everybody and the audience and the public and everybody. So, thank you for coming, Troy.
Thank you. Council members, thank you for your time and your effort. Chris, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I appreciate the time and I'll try to keep it down under two hours here. So, really, anybody can build a building. But coming here to Granberry about two years ago, my wife and I, actually, my dad said, you know what we need here in Granberry? I'm like, what? He goes, we need an Ace Hardware store. So, I looked around and looked around and didn't have one. So, I got with the president of Ace and after about a year and a half, now I'm the investor for Ace in this area. So, we can build a square building or we can just build one that looks ugly, but living on the lake, I said, you know what would be cool? Is if we have an architectural designed roof that looks like, because Granberry is known for the lake, right? So, we said, how about a wave? So, if you're fishing and you don't want waves, or if you're skiing, you shouldn't want waves, but, you know, you get waves when the wind. So, I said, you know what? Why don't we design with Walt, my architect, I said, why don't we design an architectural designed roof that looks like a wave? So, this picture that you're looking at comes from Idaho and it is an existing basketball arena. And so, we're, the concept is this, when the building is finished, it will look like this from the outside and then the inside. So, the concept was that we could build just an Ace store or we could build something that gives everyone here in Granberry a shopping experience. So, half of the store will be a, this is the architectural design right here. It's just one dimensional, obviously, but it'll look like the picture when we're done. If you can go to the, well, like, go to the inside if you have a plan of the inside.
You've got four slides, just click it.
So, that's an aerial view and you see that kind of oval looking middle of the building there? That's, I'll get to that in a minute. That's a side view and that's the planned view.
That's the last one.
That's the last one. So, back up to the, let me back up to the entrance. So, when you walk into this building or when you drive by the place, in case some of you out here don't know where it's at, we bought the property across from Kroger on Highway Four, right behind racetrack. And our thought was that people that turn that corner and see this, it'd be an architectural design, a really nice looking building from the exterior. On the inside, half of it will be an Ace Hardware store. The other half, we will have high-end ladies apparel, sports equipment, Lululemon type stuff. We'll have Sir Lata or Williams Sonoma type home goods. And I know that probably most of you, if not all of you, have ever been into a Barnes and Noble. Well, you're looking at the guy that built the first Barnes and Noble with a center cafe in it. So, all the Barnes and Nobles that have center cafes, you can shoot me or thank me. But, so, in this building, we will have a center cafe. It'll be elevated, so it'll be on the same scale as the Barnes and Noble ones that we built. We will have, it's just a great shopping experience and a place to relax. So, we're in negotiation right now with Baked to furnish and run the cafe. So, that'll be a, that'll be a great shopping experience. It'll be a great view for the city. It'll be a great architectural design building for the city. So, we talked to Tammy, I don't know where she, oh, there she is. And not only will we have shopping in there, we can also have small gatherings or, you know, people that she brings into town. So, it'll be a great experience for everyone. Let's see what else. I think that covers it. I think my two hours is up. But I appreciate your time. Any questions, concerns you have, just let me know. So, this is our proposed, this is what we like to do and I think it'd be great for the city. So, thanks for your time. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Now, we have a proclamation. I'm gonna come out to the front here. Why don't you just hang out here with me, Joe? Why don't you come over here if you will, too? Where's the dog?
The talking dog. Ross wouldn't let me bring it in.
Oh, okay. Okay. Let me read this proclamation here. Whereas the effective communication to residents, businesses, and visitors is essential for transparent and responsive governance, and whereas dedicated government communications of our cities, counties, school districts, and other agencies play an essential role in creating both routine and emergency messages which reach the public in a clear, timely, and informative way, and whereas these professionals seek to increase public understanding of government initiatives, policies, and services, as well as receive and relay feedback from residents, thereby fostering a more engaged community in government leadership, and whereas the skill, dedication, and creativity exhibited by government communicators contribute to building trust and confidence in government, now therefore be it resolved that I, Jim Charick, Mayor of the City of Granberry, to hereby proclaim February 24th, 24, 2024 as Government Communicators Day in Granberry, Texas, and encourage residents to join me in acknowledging the tremendous positive impact of their work. It's given under my hand to Seal the City of Granberry, Texas, 20th Day of February 2024. And I give this to you, Jeff, as our head communicator. I congratulate you. I thank you. Appreciate you guys for all that you do. And we'll get Mr. Ross to take pictures. All right. This is favorite part of the evening, city council, city manager issue encouraging statements and recognize staff. Mr. Kaufman?
I'm gonna do something a little different. I'm gonna step up front right quick. We've got the privilege of having some great people work for the city of Granberry. Tonight, we're gonna recognize Connie. Come up here, Connie. Surprise. So, we wanted to get Connie here. We knew that if we told her it was for her, she wouldn't be here, so. Connie is our volunteer, if y'all don't know it. She comes up and works the front desk as people walk through the door and directs traffic with a smile, just being professional. You can't believe the treatment she gives people in the most adverse situations. When it was cold, when the offices were cold during the winter storm a while back, we were running electric heaters to her to try to keep her warm, but she just trudged right on through and took care of us. And we just wanted to individually thank you for all you do for us. And I have, Ava wants to say a few things, too, so.
Yes, Connie, same thing as Chris said, we greatly, greatly appreciate everything you do. You are very special to us. And I was gonna say the same thing as Chris, that we had to literally trick you to come to this council meeting. And, yeah, when your elbow was broken, we couldn't tell you not to come to work. Connie is like, she's always here every Tuesday and Friday. And last year, during the outage, for two months, or maybe it was three months, she was here every day because she wanted to help us with the call volumes. So, we greatly appreciate you.
And I got a little something for you here. Little token, little gift card there, but go have lunch on us somewhere. Thank you for everything you do. Your blessing. While we've got the utility billing team, come on up, let's get a picture here. Sure. So, whether you realize it or not, they all work together in unison, the whole first floor. Connie directs people to the right direction when they walk in because they can't seem to read signs, but that's the way it works. But we're happy to have her and we're also, if you look at this billing, utility billing team that we have, three of them are new since the outage last July. So, wow, what a switch we've done. Leslie's carried the ball for us the whole time, but we've really enjoyed having y'all come on board and doing a great job. Now, whether you know it or not, they're fixing to start cutting off utilities for people that hadn't paid in seven months because of the outage. So, they're fixing to really take some heat downstairs. So, we might need to post Chris by them real close to be our security for them, but we've got, we've got some tough challenges. We've got over a million dollars of delinquent bills over the last seven months where people haven't paid during the outage. Even though we weren't able to bill, the bills kept coming and there seems to be confusion about how much they owe. We don't have any confusion on it. They do, because they want to challenge every cent that you're charging them. But these ladies walk through it, explain it to them. The city council and the staff through the years have acquired software and technology that actually helps these ladies explain to the customers what day their water was running and how long it ran and their electricity, the same way, the consumption. And it really does make people understand that they were using those utilities and that part of our system never got attacked by the cyber event. So, anyway, they take a lot of heat, a lot of stress, and you can see they're still smiling tonight. So, we want to thank y'all. And I've got y'all a small token of appreciation as well. Thank y'all. Let's get a picture, Ava. Ava's been right there with them, helping them through the whole time. Come this way more. Congratulations, ladies. Thank y'all for all you do. Thank you, Connie.
Council, other comments?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Raggedy.
Those are the ladies that I think of when I think of front lines, you know, in the military, you send the front, you send the best in the front, you know, and get the job done. You know, those ladies right there, they deal with a lot, like Chris was saying, and they're the front lines right there that take the, most of the abuse and criticism for, on behalf of the city. So, I just want to say again, thank y'all again.
Okay? All right. Absolutely. Thank you, ladies. It is the best part of the evening. I still, I will say that again. Let's move to the State of Granberry Volunteer Fire Department presentation by the fire chief. This is the second best part. Keep your eye on it. Oh, he's not?
Mr. Manager, Mayor?
It's moving up.
Yeah, it's unusual. I've been cotton pants in public again and it's awkward for everyone, so. Mr. Mayor, city manager, council, appreciate your time. This is our kind of annual state of the department discussion. And I'm gonna do my best to fly right through it because I know you guys, at the end of the day, will have some questions for us. So, here's 2023 by our numbers. So, we had 1,576 calls. We had a two-minute and 39-second en route time, a five-minute and 43 travel time, and 22 minutes and 38 seconds on scene. And I want to highlight that en route time, that's particularly from the moment that the pager goes off to the first truck en route. The national standard for career fire departments is 90 seconds, so you have something to kind of compare that to, minute and a half versus two minutes and 40 seconds. It's exceptional for volunteer. So, one thing I do want to highlight, particularly for us, is there is starting to become the classic population increase and increase in call volume. And this slide particularly just shows that it is going up, but it's the classic 10%. You can hold all of our numbers by 10% in call volume increase, except for 23. We decreased just a little bit that year in total fire calls. The big difference between 22 and 23 is that we had a harder freeze in 22. It wasn't Snowmageddon, but we also had a hard freeze in 22 and that was what resulted in the extra fire alarms and sprinkler calls run. Prior to 2021, we were averaging less than 950 call, fire calls a year, and that number continued to decrease as you go further and further back. Now, this particular slide up here, and I probably should have brought my slide with me because it's a little small for me, but the thing I'm trying to highlight here specifically that we track is our city call volume and our county call volume. And unfortunately, I couldn't get all three on the same slide, but our city call volume for last year, squinting and staring really hard, I think was 1,135 calls last year. And then the combined county call volume was 461. There's another slide. I'm gonna go forward, but I'll come back to this main slide. That one's zoomed in a little bit better. And the main calls that we're always gonna be highlighting is gonna be structured fires, traffic accidents, and medicals. Particularly in the county, you can see, if you scroll down, for the county, we had 70 calls in the county portion last year. And that, that particular call volume is not, not even remotely in our district. Those are mutually laid EMS calls.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's an EMS call. Since you can't read it from back there, you can turn around and look at it if you need to.
I might literally have to do that. It's a little too tight for me. Yeah, 1,115. But that's, particularly this year, one thing that we've, we've been having to focus on is the extra medical call volume. And it is a factor. Texas EMS is working diligently through it. They've hired a bunch of people. I would say in their credit that things are getting better. And Ricky Reeves deserves a lot of credit for that. That said, if you look at the medical, particularly the medical call volume line for the cities, for the city, and it's right in the middle, and I'm gonna step back and look at it, but I can tell you that you'll see that the first quarter, there may be a little bit of a high call volume there, but the second quarter, it goes higher, third quarter, it goes higher, and fourth quarter, it calls, it goes higher. And that's just the stress on the system and that's what's happening there. And it's being directly reflected with us. And those numbers are proportional between the city and the county call volume. Oh, let me go back. It's gonna be the same thing. You'll see that just the call volume per quarter continues to increase. And it's just, it's one of those factors that's, it's being addressed, it's being worked on now, and it's 100% external for us. Is there any particular questions about those two slides?
I would like to highlight the, the grass fires in the county, 140. Can you flip back to a previous slide?
Sure.
Grass fire in the city, 56. In the ETJ, 17. And so, it kind of gives you an idea of what we're doing beyond our borders. I think if you flip back to the county slide, yeah, like I say, I wish it was all in the same. The 92 residential fires for commercial for the, for the county compared to the previous slide, please. 24 commercial in the city and 16 in the city residential. So, the fire, firefighting in the county for those type activities is really heavy. Obviously, we respond to motor vehicle crashes. You've got rescue EMS on one line and you've got accident on another. Could you kind of go into detail on the difference between those two?
Sure. So, the accident is car accidents. That's what that is. Anything that's going to be vehicle related. Rescue EMS is gonna be more of our technical rescue. It's why there's not a lot of it on there. But it's gonna be high angle, swift water, lake rescues, confined space, and there's calls sometimes where at face value, it's a medical call, but they are entrapped in something and sometimes it's just their own house or their own vehicle. And that's gonna contribute to either a rescue or an extrication. So, not all of them are TV melodramas and big impact calls, but the patient was still in a position where they needed the fire department.
Thank you.
Okay? There's a, the information that's provided here and any other information that I, I have a tendency to hand out associated with the department, it's kind of being fed to you in the sense of being waterboarded. There's a ton of information. If anyone ever has any questions about any of it, please ask, because I know it's, it's a lot when I give it out. So, moving forward, Granberry right now has 71 members. Last year, those 71 members had 9,675 individual responses and they had a grand total of 6,858 hours on scene. So, our average response times are types, and these are our average firefighters on scene. So, last year, we averaged 11 firefighters per commercial fire, 10 for residential. Vehicle accidents, we averaged seven. And fire alarms, I always highlight fire alarms because, one, it's the boy who cried wolf almost every single time, and it's a call that is occasionally a legitimate working fire, smoke showing, fire showing, and you're still arriving on scene with enough personnel to meet NFPA standards for two in, two out, and five personnels more than enough to get a lot of work done immediately on that scene. I would argue, don't get me wrong, 11 or 10 people or seven on scene's a great number, but for every single call that the fire alarm represents, again, vast majority, 99.99% of these are the boy who cried wolf and we're showing up with the appropriate personnel each time. That's one of our strongest response numbers is that particular number. Citizen donations. So, computers were down for a little while and all of that I had tracked on our share drive. It took me up until today because the city's IT's got our share drive back up and finally have that number. Last year, we averaged, had $37,000 in donations. That's what we received in private donations. Grants and reimbursements. For VFIS, we had a reimbursement of $12,283. Reimbursed $19,700 for PPE. Off of the Big L Fire, $11,000. That's a disaster mitigation reimbursement. Different call for Johnson County for disaster assistance, we've got 1,400 off of that. Texas Farm Bureau, 750. And Teaks and Houseville, 2604, greater than $26,000 last year. So, total reimbursement since 2020 is $78,000 and that does include grants. That does not include our newest $19,000. That number, I did forget to add that in there. So, training last year, we had 3,255 hours of training, averaged a 28 per member, and two new fire academies completed last year. Through those fire academies, our members are coming out state certified through SFMA One and Two. There's a lot that actually takes place for that to happen. And without talking forever about it, one thing I do want to highlight is our district president, Donnie Hurd. He's a training captain at GVFD. And our assistant chief, Jesse Slaughter, who's our training coordinator for the district, kind of a big captain surprise in the bag, is we're working on getting reciprocity through TCFP. So, our SFMA certifications, if the firefighters are all the way through all four stages of their training, they'll actually be state-recognized Texas Commission of Fire Protection firefighters. So, that's a huge monumental leap forward, not only for volunteer firefighters, but particularly for us, because we've overemphasized using the program, making sure that we have a state standard that we follow, following through with the standard and acquiring all the testing and ultimately certification on it. Granberry's probably gonna be one of the few towns in Texas that, when the reciprocity comes through, will have upwards of 50 to 60 commissioned firefighters on staff. So, budget in brief, last year, we had no major surprises. We fully transitioned into our new P25 radio network. Our ISO consultant, we had met with him in the fall of last year and we had been on a brief pause and we plan on challenging our ISO rating this year. And it'll be probably not this quarter, but definitely by the middle of next quarter. And I have very high hopes for that evaluation. Realistically, we should come out of there as an ISO Two and should be Realistically, we should come out of there as an ISO 2 and should be very easily in an ISO 2. I didn't put the numbers up, because quite frankly, we haven't hit an ISO 2, so I'm not going to brag too hard about it until we do it. But when we do hit an ISO 2, you'll probably see me cartwheeling around City Hall for a while. That's a monumental achievement. And don't get me wrong, that's big for the department, that's the city. I think ISO gets almost underspoken a little bit in how much the city has to be able to reach those standards. Don't get me wrong, the fire department's part of it, but the truly hard part, the very, very expensive part, is the city. And this council and Mr. Kaufman, you guys have made a huge, huge impact on that, and we're going to deliver on ISO. And that's a big benefit. At the very end of the year, we had some money left over, and we took one of our older trucks, it's a great truck, great service, and sent it off for some repair work and just to make sure that the truck can carry into its later years of service life easily and comfortably. So for this year, major projects, we want to continue to still grow the department. I know 71 sounds like a lot, but I can tell you that we do need more. Recruiting. Recruiting's going to be a big part of that. ISO challenge in the new rating. Long-term sustainability. The ISO, that adds, for lack of better words, a term I always like to use as a golden junior with a golden star. The ISO is a gold star. The firefighter reciprocity and the state-certified recognition of our program and the members is a gold star. There's lots of gold stars there, and what it's really equating to is long-term sustainability for the department and for the city. And there'll be another slide or two, and we'll talk about that. We're implementing a health and wellness program through one of our board of directors. We have Dr. Hedges. And again, we're talking about a volunteer organization trying to figure out how to implement a health and wellness program. A lot of these programs and other external projects that I'm talking about, we've been using the Hood County subsidy to help take the pressure off of the city in that. That health and wellness program will be through the subsidy. Finally cleared. It was interesting getting to that point, but we county purchased two new apparatus for GVFD. These apparatus will replace two city apparatus. Delivery times is interesting, anywhere between one years and three years out, but everyone's got that same story. And then ultimately, we're moving closer and closer to three fire and EMS stations in Hood County, and one of them is specifically with GVFD, and it'll be inside the city limits of Granberry, and it'll be up there on the north end of the loop, up there by Bacchus Elementary. That project is finally, looks like it's going to start moving forward pretty soon. Director Reeves had just signed the next round of paperwork with the county. So it looks like they're going to be moving forward with that project. I can't speak to the other EMS locations, because frankly, they're not in my district, and someone else can deal with that. Okay. Big write-up that I had, and this comes from our election cycle last year. I've always taken a pretty passive role in social media, but the typical write-up of why does Granberry not have a career fire department? And I sat down, put the time, energy, and effort into the write-up, and I feel very confident in my write-up. And as you see at the end of this, as we get to the end of these slides, it's going to be cost. That's the factor. Why having GVFD is best for the city? We have a high average of firefighters on scene. That's non-salaried personnel. You have an adequate number of apparatus that the city's purchasing for the department, we're using it, and we're getting it out there. And one of the more key factors on this is how fast we're en route. That's a big factor on this. As we move on, if you replace the VFD, what do you replace it with? Combination or full-time? So if you replace the VFD, what you have to survey is areas around you. Weatherford, Stephenville, Brownwood, Ennis, Cleburne. And as I just looked at their city budgets, proposed budgets for 24, I just did a basic cost analysis and looked at their salary and benefits line items for their firefighters, and just divided it by the total amount of employees they had, and I had numbers for each of the cities. And as we go through it, you average all of those together for the average employee, salary and benefits, is $127,000, $124 a year. So we have a number now. And when you base that number, you have to turn around and imply it into something. What are you replacing the volunteers with? Well, from my point of view, you have to at least replace what the volunteers are providing. And right now, they're providing you, on average, with 13 firefighters on a commercial structure fire. Kicker is, is that's three shifts. They don't work 24/7. Your volunteers do. So you have to cover three shifts, you've got to find officers and chiefs. So I based the department off of 42 personnel. It's just a rough guess. You can go any direction you want. You can go with more. It just costs more. You can go with less. You're being provided less, because the volunteers are providing more. So you take 42 personnel, and you multiply it by $127,000, and it's $5.3 million. Or a 22-cent property tax increase from 38.5 to 60.5, or 57% total increase. And as you get through it, the question you have to ask is why? And it is a hard question to ask, and it's a hard question to ask publicly. And probably the most important thing that I want people to understand is, particularly in our community, we want the challenge, we want the burden, we want the responsibility of protecting our town. I cannot truly begin to describe to you how important this burden is to me. This is something to be proud of, and it is something that the department has embraced also. I can assure you 1,000%, none of this is possible with just me. I am not the factor in this. It is our membership, it is our officers, it's the work with the city, it's the work with our citizens, it is everyone. Because it's a complex machine, and unfortunately, it can be fragile. And I say, what you have to do is challenge the organization every year. There's nothing wrong with challenging the organization. Are you meeting your service standards for your citizenry? Are you hitting response times? Are you taking the right trucks? Are you getting there quick enough? Are they trained? It's not a social club, it's public safety. The volunteers are meeting that. We've established a tradition and a trajectory to continue to establish it and improve it. And that is the challenge that I ask from the city every single time. Challenge us. Oddly enough, I would say this, you hear this statement a lot, they're only volunteer, how much more can you ask? I would have agreed with that four years ago. Today, and I can't explain why, I say ask more. It is incredible. The more you ask of people, the more responsibility that you give them, the more ownership that they give of their community, they rise, and they do take it. And the difference with our organization is that we have a very specific niche of service that we provide. The best part about it is being volunteer and saving that theoretical 5.3 million a year is ultimately the other services and benefits that we can extend to the citizens. And sometimes it's tourism, and sometimes it's for other city departments, and sometimes it's for nothing fun or awesome, but it adds to the new city infrastructure. And the department gives us just a little bit of flexibility on that, as long as the organization is strong. One of the volunteer departments that I've been referencing a lot, is a gigantic volunteer fire department on the south side of Houston. It's called League City. League City operates roughly like Granberry does. They have a 146-person department, they have six stations, they only run fire and rescue, and they have a priority dispatch medical. They really don't run a lot of medical calls, because if they did, in their 118,000-person city, it'd be 25,000 or 30,000 calls a year. Volunteers can't run that. But by being able to prioritize the fire to just specifically being volunteer, they're able to control that call volume a little bit more, and it's a lot more manageable. League City has a city budget of $331 million a year, and their VFD costs them $3.5 million. It has a huge impact if it's embraced. And I see Granberry being at that, I don't want to call it crossroads, because it makes it sound melodramatic, but that's a decision that Granberry's going to have to make. It's not today, it's not tomorrow. But how long do you want to run with volunteer? I'm telling you that not only is it 10 or 25 or 30 years out, it's a lot further out than that. It just takes time and a commitment to a direction. There's just a segue to it. How far do you want to stay with it? I think a big part of it is meetings like this and our being open with the citizens and being open to questions and taking input and criticism and critique from the city and recommendations. That's vital for us. Oh, I just hit all that. More you ask, the higher they'll reach. We want the challenge, I just want to reiterate that. Okay. This weekend, I went down to a chief development program down in Austin, and there was a lot of stuff that they are covering that I feel very comfortable with. Part of it's a 10-year strategic plan. We have mini-plans, and we have multiple ways to access and review those plans. There are two, three, and 10-year work. So far, we're in the third year of our strategic plan, and shockingly, we're actually ahead of where I expected to be. I suspect we'll have to revise it at year five. In our 10-year planning, a big part of this is health and safety for our members and community risk reduction. One thing I want to highlight last year is, in the actual city limits of city of Granberry, we had one fire. And everyone knows this one fire very well, because it happened about a block over and on a corner of the square. Okay? That fire was an extreme challenge for our organization, and it is very difficult to sit here on a public podium and tell people at how good of a success that fire was for us, while still acknowledging that for the business owner, they lost everything. And it is, it puts us in a position where there's always more we can do for public education and relations, but still address community risk. And projects on the square is part of that. Ultimately, our firefighter health and safety, and I was talking about our health and wellness program. Not going to worry too much here on resource management, operations, and development. I've pretty much hammered that out. And at the end of the day, I really want to extend my thanks to city council for your new purchase of our aerial and quick-attack truck pictured here. So thank you very much. Our organization is looking very much to working with these apparatus, even if it is two and three years out.
I had one question.
Yes, sir.
The training that you got through, I'm very impressed with that. Do the other stations go through the same amount of training as we do here in Granberry?
We offer it to them. It's kind of an integral part of our program. The more that we train the departments around us, at the end of the day, if we handle their training, we know the level they're operating at. It makes everyone safer on scene. The vast majority of departments around us now, in Hood County and even a little bit outside of Hood County, are coming to Granberry for training.
Will you offer it, do they accept?
Most of the time. Not every time, most of the time.
I'm not going to ask any more questions. It's not getting any more comfortable. Thank you. Yes, Chris?
First off, thank you for coming tonight. Great report. I think it shows that probably about 40% of our calls are out in the county, and the county does subsidize you guys with about $105,000 this year, and they just approved $335,000 out of a $7.9 million bond issue to buy those two vehicles. So hats off to them for contributing. I think they need to contribute more, and we'll continue to pursue that. But also want to brag about our department having a three ISO rating. What that means is your homeowner's insurance is cheaper, or your business insurance is cheaper because of that great score. It could be as high as 10, and some communities have a 10. Out in the county, they have a 10. Inside the city limits, they have a three. So when somebody says it costs too much to live in the city, I beg to differ if they'll check their insurance premium. But our property taxes are much lower than a lot of folks' homeowner's insurance policy out in the county. But also, we've got three stations, and that's a lot to do with Mr. Brad Snyder sitting at the back. There was one of these pictures that we showed through here, it's his truck. He's got a whole fleet of vehicles that he has bought and fights fire for Granberry as a member of the VFD, Granberry Volunteer Fire Department. And we want to thank him for his expense and his donations that don't show up in the reports. It's just him working behind the scenes. When he has his crews there at the office and they're working, and there's a tone that goes out, and there's a fire in the city, his employees will respond to that, or a crash, his employees will respond to that, too. And he keeps paying them while they're doing it. So it takes a community to make this happen, like you said. And we've got great volunteers. Recently put together a board, and I know Mr. Haith is serving on that board, and Mr. Mowley used to. I don't know who is on it now, but there's some organizational strategic planning going on with this group that hadn't in the years past. And I want to thank y'all for that, and helping us to help you, and bringing those needs to us at the budget workshop and saying, you know, I need three trucks, I could get by with two. And the city council responded appropriately, in the peril of even being unelected. So a half-cent tax rate went up to help fund the trucks, and you'd have thought we'd taken the firstborn child of everybody in town. So it's a tough call, but we're here to serve together. We consider you all a vital partner in our community, and we can't thank you enough. Brad can't thank you enough either for your station number three that is part of that ISO rating that helps our community. So I just didn't want that to go away.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. Matt, great presentation. I think this is great information that really deserves the community to know and understand and read. You know, having been on council, served on planning and zoning, one of the things I've heard over the years is, you know, one of the reasons that we don't have a Costco or a Target or you name the store, because we have a volunteer fire department. Well, I think those same people are going to be surprised when they see the little corner Ace Hardware Store that's going to come up there on FM4, and it's like, how did that happen? And I think Chris mentioned, I mean, looking back over the years, I think city council and the city staff have really come together and partnered with the volunteer fire department. And as Chris said, you came to the budget workshop, you know, had a request, you know, we had a preliminary budget put together, we amended the budget, we added those two apparatuses into the budget, and as Chris said, you know, we took the tax rate up a half a cent to fund that. And that really is all about, you know, community service and community protection, and for me, that was an easy call. So we appreciate all you guys do, and Brad, and all the people that are associated with the fire department. Richard, thanks for all you do, and we just have a great team of people. We appreciate all you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to add real quick, Ms. Fay Landem's also on our board.
Yeah, I thought so.
Sorry, Ms. Fay.
I think she might have had some influence on that $37,000 this year.
Maybe.
Maybe, yes. Thank you all. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you coming forward. Appreciate, appreciate you coming forward, and certainly appreciate the work you and the board are doing. Now move to public comments on agenda items, and since we only have one public comment item tonight, or public meeting item tonight, that's everything. So I do have a, a request up here from Mr. Wayne Lee. Mr. Lee, if you would come to our podium, introduce yourself, and let us know where you, where you're from.
There we go. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and I'm here more to say thank you. We're, we're about to start a subdivision out here that I've literally been working on for 19 years. Hard to believe that, but sometimes you get into situations that are unavoyable, some of them are avoyable, but during that time, I've always been, I've always tried to give back. So 19 years ago, on adjoining property, was Bacchus Elementary School. They had a terrible way to get in and out. It was a gravel road, muddy, and so sometimes I look back and things, and have to say, well, at least I lift it better, because we, we built and paved Bacchus Road at our expense. Got a great letter from the superintendent of schools, and Randy Leach back then, and also from the, from the mayor and everything here. But what I really want to say is, I've worked with a lot of cities. I've been doing this about 50 years. I've probably put in about 300 subdivisions, and I, and I realize sometimes there are, there are unintended consequences of rules. And sometimes I want to commend you, though, and just in the last few weeks, I know y'all have done some things that I believe will help your city, and will streamline things for other people that might be coming here. It's kind of funny, I feel like I'm at home, because in 1956, I was 14 years old, and my uncle was the pastor of First Baptist Church down the street here. And my, my parents wanted me to get a hardship license, and in Granberry, that was a little easier to do that day. So I got my first driver's license here when I was 14 years old in 1956. You, you can do the math, so you'll know how old I am. But I feel like I'm home. We, we intend to build a really nice community out there, and I've been, it's been a pleasure working with Chris Kaufman, Jeremy, and I look forward to working with each one of you. If there's ever any, any situations that you need some help on, I, I love helping, so I just want you to know that. But I want to thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda routine are previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Mr. Vale, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Corrigan, Mr. Wadley, anything you want to come up? No? No? Okay, there are five of us here tonight, so all in favor, argue, if you will, give me a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Vale makes the motion. Mr. Corrigan seconded the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. Consent agenda passes 5-0. All right. We'll move to the deliberation agenda. We will discuss and consider adopting ordinance number 24-12 for a new franchise agreement with Waste Connections Lone Star, Inc., for solid waste services in the city of Granberry. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. Our agreement with, excuse me, Waste Connections will mature on May 1st, and so about 60 days ago, they brought a proposed franchise agreement to renew. I tweaked it a little bit. I actually had a citizen reach out to me that lives here, that's retired contract consultant for a competitor of theirs, that wanted to be involved in, in inclusive manner to provide his expertise. So I rely on citizens, different times for different things, and so I met with him, and we kept it very confidential, so that this would not be spread anywhere. But he, he pointed out a few things that would make the agreement easier to read, and nothing substantial, really. It was a good agreement, and I did put a, a five-year timeline on this new agreement as well, to where it does not automatically renew. And we sent it back, after our city staff, or city attorney looked at it and made his changes, we then sent it back to Waste Connections. Their lawyers looked it over, they have since signed it, returned it to us, so we can present it to you. Obviously, there's a price increase, just like everything else that's happened in the last five years, and we've, we've got that in there with the new price sheet on the back. These are our wholesale prices, and we will bring these prices and coordinate them with our fee schedule at a future date before May 1st, probably the second meeting in March, to be exact. And we will then implement those in March and move forward, if that be your pleasure. But at this point, staff recommends approving the proposed ordinance, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. We also have Mr. Sean Dowden here with Waste Connections Lone Star, Inc. If you have any questions or need some more information, we're here to help. So, thank you.
Council, do you have questions? Mr. Vale?
I just, yeah, I just had a couple of questions for Sean. Maybe Sean, you could step up to the podium, please? Thanks.
Yes, sir. I'm Sean Dowden with Waste Connections, District Manager for Weatherford and Stevieville.
Sean, thanks for being here tonight.
Yes, sir.
Read back through the presentation. Can you talk a little bit about our recycling efforts here in Granberry? I.e., where does it go? How is it all recycled? Kind of explain that whole process?
Okay, so right now, the utility billing department basically signs them up if they want to do recycle or not. We bring them a tote, it keeps it separated from the regular MSW trash. Then we gather it, we take it to Elliott Rita Road, and some of our public services there on Elliott Rita Road in Fort Worth. And they have a recycling facility there. They take it, we, they process it, and then they band it, ship it to whoever the buyer is. Sometimes it doesn't get bought as fast as it, they need it to, so they have to unband it, reprocess it, and then band it back up. So.
You don't have any idea how many, how many citizens we have, or households we have within the city that are signed up for recycling program?
As far as signed up, no. Well, what we do have is, we typically service on a Monday and a Wednesday on those service days, around 1,900, give or take, because not everybody puts their tote out every week to get serviced.
Okay.
You know, so it's just back and forth.
Okay. Just second question, then. Can you kind of give us the status on what, what the status of the landfill is, so we pick up all our solid waste, or you guys pick up all our solid waste? Comes up to, to Weatherford, what's the status of that landfill, and what's its useful life? Where is it in its useful life? And then where, where would the next landfill potentially be?
Weatherford landfill is officially in what's called mothball stage.
Right.
In the next, probably in the next six months to a year, we will be closing that landfill. We are not accepting waste at that landfill. We take everything to the Weatherford Transfer Station, it is right across the street, and then when we get it at the transfer station, we take it to Turkey Creek Landfill in Alvarado at the moment. Jacksboro, we're currently working on a landfill opening up in Jacksboro, and that's going to cut our travel time drastically in half to dispose of it, so that's a great thing. But that landfill in Jacksboro's probably got quite a few hundred lives, or years of life. But, I mean, will be passed away before, before it closes.
You're not going to be here? Okay. I won't be here either then.
Mayor.
So, all right. All right, that's all I had, Sean. Thank you very much.
Other questions for Sean?
Mayor? Not so much a question, just wanted to say thank you. You know, we, when you guys originally brought us the, the agreement and the numbers, they looked a little different than where we're at today, and you guys were very willing to collaborate with us, and go back and forth, and have those conversations, and, and get to where, where we ended up. So we appreciate you working with us.
No, 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 thank you, guys. I know Mr. Kaufman put in a lot of work, and he was bantering with me back and forth, you know, telling me where I screwed up, you know, things like that. He read, he, he retinted a lot, but I mean, it was good. It was a great, great session for us to get to work together. And we've always enjoyed the loyalty and the partnership that we've had, and the way that we can easily talk to each other and work, work things out as a partnership.
I might just add that we had a, a condition at our old landfill, that Public Works was working desperately to clean up, to be in compliance with Texas Natural Resource Commission, and they helped us with that, bringing out the roll-offs that we needed. I don't know how many we took, but it was more than 20, of just cleaning up things that had been illegally dumped at our landfill. And we've changed the key on the gate. We actually had a former employee got caught out there doing, unloading something, so we, anyway, Waste Connections really helped us through that, and we suffered no fines from TCQ, and hats off to Public Works for getting that done, but it was a big deal, and they, they came through and helped us with it. So the idea is to not let anybody dump anything out there ever again, because it's against the, the post-closure regulations of a landfill, to have people continue to dump. So we're working through that, we got it cleaned up with their help. Also, in the, in the agreement, they provide roll-off containers for different events that we have every year, and, and that's been very helpful. Thank you for that. And then finally, the twice-a-year bulk pickup, curbside bulk pickup for all the residences, that happens, and that's in the agreement as well. So the rates are going to go up about, residential rates, I think they go up about $2, if I'm not mistaken, but it's very competitive. Did my research, looked around. Also, I just want you to know, Sean, that the day I was sending you my final edits, InWalks competitor X wanting our business, and I said, we've got something that works here, it's not broke, we're not going to fix it. So unless the council redirects me, this is the direction we're going, sir. But he left me his stuff, he's a nice guy, but they're, you know, they're competitors, and they all know when these contracts come up, and they all go after each other's business. So it's not like we don't have choices, but the choice that we have chosen or recommend to you tonight is, is doing a great job for the city, taking care of our needs. I've worked in cities where you get 10, 15 complaints every day that the trash service is run, and we don't get anywhere near that. And when we do, the staff takes care of us, Sean takes care of us, and so we've got a good program. Like my memo said, we've been using this company by different names for over 35 years, so maybe 40, because I've been here almost nine, and May will be nine, and it was at 30 then, so it'll be 40 years by the time we renew this, that the same company, the same staff, just get bought out and change over, and there's a little rotating retirement attrition. But basically, we've got a great company that's providing a great service, and they're not a small fish in the, in the tank, either. They're a pretty big player in the market. So we're getting some good cost-benefit savings from that size. Having their own landfill helps us save money. Having the recycling program to extend the life of the landfill is even better for everybody, so.
And again, thank y'all for the loyalty, the partnership, and then, you know, the betterment of our community, too, because, I mean, we have a lot, a lot of people that live in this community also, that work for our company, that knows the area, so thank you.
Great. Others? Okay. Thanks, Sean. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion to approve or amend the previously approved loc, oop, wrong one. Do I have a motion to approve the 24-12 new franchise agreement with Waste Connections Lone Star, Inc., for solid waste services in the city of Granberry? Mr. Wadley?
Yes.
Make a motion?
I thought Stephen was getting ready to. So yes, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 24-12 as presented.
Seconded, and seconded by Mr. Vale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Nay.
I believe that passes 6-0, or 5-0. I knew we wouldn't get all night without that. Discuss impossible approval to amend the previously approved location of a historic marker to recognize the African-American school. Mr. Kaufman?
So this, this item is back again. You remember back in 2020, we worked with the school, GIST, to put this together. Aaron's here to make a report to you on this topic, but hopefully, this will be our last meeting to have this on the agenda tonight. Thank you. Aaron, I'll let you take it over, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Mr. Manager. So the request is to change the location approved by council back in 2020 for placement of the marker along the city's Moments and Times Trail near Lambert Branch Park to a location closer to the school building, original site, along Keith Street, near what is now the city-owned fire training center. And if you'll recall, this came to us in 2020 from Granberry ISD, wanting to recognize the location of an African-American school that once stood along Keith Street. And Parks Board and council back in 2020 approved the location at Lambert Branch Park. Then I came before you back in December 19th, '23, asking to change that location to Keith Street, near the original location. So this item was postponed at that time to give staff additional time to research possible property restrictions that could result from the placement of Texas historical markers on said property. We, we did determine that there are no restrictions if you do place a marker on a piece of property. You just, if you need to move it for any reason, you just simply inform the Texas Historical Commission of your intentions, so they can update their records. Currently, the, the records indicate that it would go to Lambert Branch Park, but there are no exact points yet, because we haven't installed it. So we were kind of on the, on the fence as, at that previous meeting, as to put it inside the property or outside the property. So it would be our recommendation to get some guidance from you. We could certainly replace it inside the property, inside the fence. It would be a little safer from any potential vandalism, and if we ever chose to develop that property, or needed to use it for anything, we could always move it at that time. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
I might just add something to your report. Through this process, there's a neighbor that actually is aware of this school being there in his lifetime, and would like it located inside the fence to protect it from vandalism, also to be more closely located to where the actual site was. There's no restriction in the marker. In fact, it talks about two schools that were for the black community back in the old days, in the 1860s and so on, and it tells a lot of history there. So there's no restrictions where you put it. But Mayor Nan Hewlett, former Mayor Nan Hewlett, has been advocating for the Perkins family in their time out of town, or they would be here tonight, but I told Nan that he didn't need to speak unless he wanted to, but we would take care of this, and voice the concerns of the citizens to put it inside the fence, and staff has no objection to anywhere you want to put it. So we would certainly endorse whatever you want to do and get this done. The plaque has been provided to the, to the location. I believe it was paid for by the Texas Historical Commission. Instead of the normal routine, we would pay for it, or the Historical Commission here in, in the county. So this is important to the state for this to be installed somewhere, and we'd like to do it as soon as possible, wherever you prefer. Now we'll answer any questions.
Mr. Vale? Just, yeah, thank you, Chris, thank you, Aaron. Just two questions. I mean, have we, have we encountered any vandalism with any of our markers around the city over time? That you can recall?
I don't believe we've had any markers vandalized.
Okay. And what's the, what's the procedure for, you know, maintaining these, keeping them up, cleaning them, you know, keeping them legible, et cetera?
The material that these, this one's made out of, we haven't had any that we've had to clean. Some, some of them are mounted on frames that have been painted, and we've had to repaint the frames, but this one will be on a pole made out of stainless steel, and it would be mounted, and I believe, three foot by three foot.
and it would be mounted in, I believe, three foot by three foot concrete, slab of concrete. So to prevent mowers and things from bumping the pole during maintenance.
You know, I might just add to that, that the Sons of the Republic of Texas took on a project to restore every historical marker in the community. And, and they did that about three years ago. And that was a very much needed service. But things do get old and need refreshing. And we've got a great group of volunteers that have done that in the past.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah. So Chris, are we, are we looking at the proposed marker location according to the map? Or the approved marker location is that, is the new site? Let's propose.
As you can see, that's the, what we're talking about placing it in that area tonight. Either on the roadside or inside the, the field. And it would probably be, how, how far inside the field would you need to mount it?
I would probably, I would probably butt the three foot by three foot concrete up next to the fence. So it'd be close enough you could read. We don't want to have to space it where you get a mower between the fence and the sign. I would get as close as possible.
Okay.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Anyone?
And Mayor, Mayor, can I, can I call up former Mayor Hewlett to the mic and make sure that we have all the details?
It all depends on him. If he wants to come up.
Nan, I want to make sure that you've been working with the family. And, and I know it's very important to them on the, on the location and, and what we're trying to accomplish. To us, it's another marker, but to them, it's a, it's a sentimental value that they, it brings historical value to them. So I just want to make sure we, we all get the same information. That way we can make the same, or make a decision based on your information.
Thanks for inviting me up here and council, mayor, and city manager. I have worked with them and I think the best thing to do would be to get with Aaron and Joe Perkins and look at exactly where he wants it at because it's not too much more further than where you guys are talking at. But I think there is like a pecan tree right there that is right there at the area. But it's not, it's probably not five feet inside the fence or so. But I mean, it's a pretty simple place. And you can read it from where he's wanting to put it at. And I think Chris had talked about the neighbor there. The neighbor there on board with that also. So, you know, I think once you say, hey, let's put it inside the fence there. And Aaron wants to work with the, the family and some of those folks and say exactly where he wants it at, I think everybody would be happy with it. You're, you think it's okay, Chris? I mean, you know.
Appreciate it. Chris, can we, what kind of latitude do we have on this location? I mean, are, are we just saying in this general area? Or how do you want that?
Motion?
Motion, yeah.
I would just make a motion to let, let our director, Aaron, get with Mr. Perkins and find a suitable location that meets both their needs.
Yeah, I mean, you could make a motion, just place it inside the fence and work with Aaron to know the exact location of it. So, but definitely wants to be inside the fence to protect it, like you said, Chris, and, and to keep it from.
Whatever Mr. Perkins wants. I, I think, I think we're all in agreement. We want to make the community happy with the marker. There's nobody said anything negative about putting it closer to the actual site. So I think it's a no, no brainer really. It, it does get old having to bring this up over and over again. So if we, if we can just get some action tonight, similar to what I mentioned, I think we can get this taken care of as soon as Mr. Perkins gets back in town.
Just make sure that we're agreeing to move it from its originally approved site at Lambert Branch to Keith Street at its original location. And I'll be sure that we place it where it can be read from the back, from the backside of the fence and work with Mr. Perkins to make that happen.
Mayor? Mr. Rodriguez?
I make a motion that we move the marker from Lambert Branch to Keith Street and have, give Aaron the authority with, with the family to decide on the location of the marker. And, and that way we can just, that's my motion.
Can I second that motion?
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. That will pass five and oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it, Nan. We now will conduct a public hearing, consider adopting ordinance number 24-13, adopting the 2024 drought contingency plan. I'll open the public hearing after we hear from staff. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This, this item needs to be reviewed every five years. And the last time it was updated was 2019. The numbers did not include the new production for Phase One and Two of the water treatment plant. It didn't take into consideration the new elevated storage tank, it meander, and the new million, million gallon ground storage tank. That's a tongue twister. Million gallon ground storage tank being built on Pearl Street. So I did engage EHT, our Water and Sewer Engineers, and asked them to give us some new numbers to populate this ordinance to move forward, to refresh that. And so we've done that. The ordinance has been presented to you. The drought contingency plan is Exhibit A of that ordinance. And it allows us to pump more water in the winter or in the summer as needed because of the increased demand. But it also has trigger stages, just like the previous plan. All five stages are incremental. However, the old plan, if it exceeded 3.3 million gallons a day, it jumped straight to Stage Five drought contingency plan. So that's a pretty extreme jump when we have more capacity now than we used to. So the new one is pretty self-explanatory. It is something that we do monitor every, every day in the summer. We look at our total amount of water that we pump. We also look at the elevation of our tanks and understand if they're filling up during the non-peak hours and refilling. And the total impact of what we're up against to meet the needs of community is they water their lawns like crazy. So we're interested in meeting the needs of homeowners at the same time. We do have some interlocal agreements with other folks that we provide emergency water to. And so if that was to trigger in one of those subdivisions, that would affect us as well. And it goes into the numbers that we produce. And it would trigger us to do some things that we may not had to because we were helping our neighbors. So I know last summer we were, our elevated tank, meander, was tapped on to and eventually, within 24 hours, it was down to less than 12 feet. And it was not filling up faster than what they were pumping and watering their grass. So we had to take some extreme measures for those folks to shut them off in non-incorporated areas around our community and allow those pumps time to fill that tank back up. We did discover that our pumps pumped 400 gallons a minute and they were using more than that a minute. So we had a negative flow on the tank. So we monitor that and we'll deal with that as it happens. But this is a big picture. Overall, if we're in, in fact, the BRA has the ability to ma, demand that we enter into Stage One, Two, or Three of our drought contingency plan based on water supplies in the lake. And so we're very sensitive to that. And this is the tool that needs to be reported to the BRA. It needs to go to the TCQ. It also needs to go to Texas Water Development Board. The BRA also does the, the 50-year water planning for, for our region, Region G. And they, they need this as part of their five-year plan as well to look at what we're doing. So happy to answer any questions you may have. We started this back in June and I got the information earlier this month. So we got it ready for you before the summer gets here. Any questions?
Are there any questions? No questions? I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public meetings. If anyone in the audience would like to speak on this matter. I see no one raising their hand or coming toward the podium. So I'll close the public meeting. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 24-13, which adopts the 2024 drought contingency plan?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
Make a motion, adopt ordinance 2413, adopting the 2024 drought contingency plan.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Some moved.
Mr. Corrigan makes a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? I hear no one opposed. Passes five and oh. Thank you. Okay. Number 7.4. Consider adopting ordinance number 24-14, amending Article 13 dot 14, Water and Wastewater Impact Fees by amending and updating land use assumptions, the Capital Improvement Plan, and amending Section 1.50.511 Fee Schedule of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinances. Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, first I'd, let me make sure I'm on. Yeah, I'd like to make a correction that we changed since staff meeting this morning, that what we're amending is 1. What is it? 1.50.511? 515. And, and now therefore be it ordained, it's five, or 1.50.515 instead of 511. So we're going to correct that in the ordinance that we signed tonight. That's been corrected, but in your packet, it's incorrect. And other than that, I watched your previous meeting when I was at training and y'all talked about this pretty in depth. Staff's put together the ordinance to meet the desires that y'all had and implement this. It would need to be published in the paper before it can go into effect. So that's where we're at. Happy to answer any questions you may have. And I did send out the information that was supplemental request on the state of Texas, other cities. I think y'all have had time to review that by now. Except Councilmember Wadley, his email's not coming through and we're gonna have to fix him up before he leaves today. Is it working now?
You just told me it is.
Okay. Good. He fixed you then. All right.
So this goes into effect the day of? It goes into the paper or six days later or what?
The day after.
The day after. And.
Sunday.
Are we in the, are we in the, can we get it into this Saturday's paper? Okay. Great. Those were my questions. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion to adopt number, ordinance number 24-14, amending Article 13-14, Water and Wastewater Impact Fees by amending and updating land use assumptions, the Capital Improvement Plan, and amending Section 1.50.515 Fee Schedule of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinances? Some moved?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan makes it. It's seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. All opposed say nay. I hear none ayes. It has passed five and oh. Thank you, gentlemen. Bless you. Excuse me.
Need some water?
I think I'll be fine. If I slide under the podium here, let, let's go get water. Okay. Number 7.5. Discuss and consider approving an interlocal agreement by and between the city of Granbury and Hood County for a planning study of the Granbury of Old Granbury Road to be performed by Teague and I won't miss there now, Knoll and Perkins and for the county to participate in the funding of the preliminary study of Old Granbury Road already completed and authorize the city manager to execute such interlocal agreement. Mr. Kaufman?
So after our intergovernmental meeting we held back in January, I, I worked towards putting together an interlocal agreement and presented that to the Commissioners Court last week, reflecting what y'all voted on at that meeting. Y'all, if y'all remember, you voted on moving forward with the study and the city being the lead of that study to implement the study, to work with engineers for that study. And so we took it to the Commissioners Court. We were planning on taking the Commissioners Court to 26, but someone else asked for something special on the agenda. So it kind of popped up on the agenda to discuss and not take action at the last meeting. So I went to the meeting and reviewed everything. We also had Teague, Knoll, Perkins staff there, Ryan Jones and Joe Atwood. And they, they were challenged with amending the agreement to include no, no fee charge changes, but when we get the study complete, to be ready to do the plan, specification, engineering, and renegotiate, renegotiate a new fee for that part of the study. And so they, they are going to draft that and send it to me, I hope, today or tomorrow. And that way I can get it to the Commissioners Court next week on the 26th. But the, the gist of the plan has not changed from what you previously voted on. But the, the recommended action that I'm asking you to consider today is approve and authorize the city manager to execute the proposed interlocal agreement with the lead entity to be determined at the Hood County Commissioners Court on February 27, 2024. I believe that's the right date. I've been saying the 26th, but let me look. If I can get my phone open. Yes, that's the 27th. That's when they meet. Now then, what happened was I asked them what they wanted me to present at the meeting on the 27th. And they felt like they couldn't answer it. And I said, you can always instruct someone what you want on an agenda without violating the Open Meetings Act. I said, so do you want the city to be the lead entity or the county? So the judge expressed that he wanted the city to. Nobody else expressed anything, but we couldn't get consensus. So I said, how about I bring one both ways and let you choose at the meeting? And so that got a laugh and a smile and we moved on and they agreed to do that. So if that's not what you want to do, by all means tell me and we will take care of it however you want. If you want the city to be the lead entity, leave it as presented in your, in your packet and make that amendment. If you want to leave it open for me to go to the court and try to reason with them why we should or shouldn't do that, I'll do that as well. Any questions? I mean, y'all have seen this multiple times on the agenda as well. So it's kind of plowing over ground.
Mayor, just a comment. Chris, thank you for, thank you for going to Commissioners Court and having this conversation. As Chris said, we had a meeting back in January, our intergovernmental meeting, our quarterly meeting. And we went through all the details on this. This is a, you know, this is the, the planning study. It's a $228,000 study. The city's already spent a little over $13,000 doing a preliminary study just to get us to this point. And I think as everybody realizes that, you know, we've, we've got a, you know, obviously continued growth. That was the, kind of the theme of our intergovernmental meeting that I heard was growth. And so, you know, we would bear a portion of that, 60% by the county, 40% to the, to the city. I made a motion to approve that. And that was voted on by city council. And as Chris said, there was no action taken by the county at that meeting. And Chris, thank you for the follow-up on that. And I did, in the motion, suggest that the city take the lead on that. And I think, I, I still feel that way personally. So that's kind of where we are with this. And I'll close my comments and wait for others.
Mr. Wadley?
At our joint meeting, the Commissioners agreed to discuss this at their next meeting. And you're saying it was not on their agenda? I mean, you talked about it, but.
Well, it was discussed to engage Teague, Knoll, Perkins, to, something to move forward with the existing preliminary study that we did and go ahead and do, start construction. And so they had to explain to them that they can't start construction because there's too many unknowns that the study that's been presented needs to answer. Like, what's the right of way needs for those improvements? What utilities are going to have to be relocated? What utility companies have to be contacted? What's the soil conditions? All that stuff that they need to figure out. All we really did was a, a traffic impact analysis study. And from there, they were wanting to move forward with construction. And so we had to explain to them that they can't. Now, I'm not criticizing them for doing that. What I'm saying is they don't know what they don't know. And they just thought, okay, as Commissioners Court, let's just say, let's go build this road. And they can't do that without the, without the study information provided. So they were, they were, they were presented that. They understood it. So that's when they said, well, we'd like for you to change this agreement to where when you get through the preliminary study, you're ready to move forward with the plan specs and engineering and you'll come back and tell us what that's going to cost. And then we'll go, keep going. So they're really wanting to do something, but they just can't get across the finish line administratively. So hopefully this will get them there.
Well, and I feel like the city should be the lead. The county is sixty percent, the city's forty percent, but thus far, the city's taken the lead on this entire project, and I would be concerned that it might stall. So I would like the city to take the lead just because, well, you said they don't know what they don't know. I feel like we do know what they don't know.
And I would like to also add that I did mention to them that even though the city's willing to fund this forty percent of this study, it could be a good use of that road and bridge tax that all the citizens of Granbury pay, just like the rest of the county citizens pay. So really, in essence, by us paying that forty percent, and I told them this, we're double taxing the citizens of Granbury to do this study. But it's worth it, in our opinion, to get it done.
Other comments? You know, I'm in the same mood, mode as Dr. Wadley and Mr. Vale here. I believe it is in the best interest of the city that the city be in the lead on this. At the same time, I'm in the best, I believe that we've got to get moving on this, and I trust our city manager to be a very good negotiator and not disappoint. So, you know, I hate to, you guys have to make the motion. If the motion is that we accept this either way, if you're, if you're the lead, we're the lead, and we're trusting Chris to make the, the argument that is proper, that proper and best for the city and the county. When it's best for the city, it's going to be best for the county in this case, certainly on these roads, then, then, you know, let, let him do it versus them stymieing the project another, literally, weeks and months at this point in time. So, Mr. Rodriguez, if you can help me with that.
Yeah. Mayor, I know this has been one of the contentious items on everybody's political career as these feeders roads. I mean, it's been prior to me coming on as an elected official. I know it's been mentioned at some of the other elected officials when they go up before and get questions about how are we going to manage traffic. I think this road is very important. This contract that we're trying to execute, and the study that we're trying to execute, has been something that we've been working on to try to do an interlocal agreement to get both of the entities to work hand in hand on this.
And the city has done all the work on this.
And so far, the city has done the work. And hopefully, we can, we can be the forefronter on this, just like we were, we have been on the radio system. We just need to get it across the line and get it moving. So I make the motion that we approve and authorize the city manager to execute the proposed interlocal agreement with the lead entity to be determined by the Hood County Commissioners Court on February twenty-seventh. Let me, let me rephrase that. I don't want, Chris, I recall my motion there, Mayor. Let me, let me ask, Chris, we don't want them to be the lead, do we, Chris?
I'm desperate enough to do whatever we need to do to get this project going. At the same time, do they have the staff? I just don't know that they do on board. And the judge fully comprehends and recognizes that, and the rest of them were really quiet. And I really feel like that they were hesitant to say anything because they felt like they were violating some kind of Open Meetings Act. And that's not what the case was at all. So they kept saying, that's not on our agenda. That's not on our agenda.
Well, I like the city to take the lead on this.
Make that motion, and I'll try to get that done.
Okay. So, Mayor, I amend my motion to state that I approve and authorize the city manager to execute the proposed interlocal agreement with the City of Granbury being the lead, and provide that information to the Hood County Commissioners Court on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hear a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Approved five and oh. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Mr. Coughlin? Get your work cut out for you.
Yes.
We'll see what we can do to help. All right. Consider adopting ordinance number twenty-four fifteen, amending the operating budget for the general fund for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four to fund the purchase of workstation cubicle panels, security access control, drops for computer and network connectivity for the American Town Hall, as well as fabric and reupholstering of furniture at City Hall, and the purchase of six new AED units for various city buildings.
That's a mouthful.
It was.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to Aaron McLean, and Director of Internal Services. So here you go, sir.
Thanks again, Mayor, Council, and Mr. Manager. Staff requested and received quotes from Martin's Office Supply for workstation cubicles for American Town Hall to allow for the relocation of four parks and rec employees and one Clean Air Coalition employee that currently office at Decker Facility. This purchase would be utilizing the cooperative purchase program through Martin's. Martin's Office Supply also provided the city a quote for fabric to be used to reupholster eighteen pieces of furniture from City Hall Lobby, upstairs waiting area, and the council chambers hallway. This quote was provided through TIPS Cooperative Purchasing Contract as well. The cost of the reupholstering of the furniture was determined from the lowest quote from local upholstery shops. This is, I believe we've got some pictures, do we, Carla? No, okay. So in your packet, I think you've got some pictures of the pinstriped furniture, and then of the new furniture, and that color is amber, I do believe, a goldish color. So this, this newer furniture goes better with the newer carpet, and then the other pinstripe furniture is original to the construction of this building and has wear and tear on it. So we would like to get it reupholstered to match the other. And we, like I say, we do have a local reupholstery shop that would be performing the work. The access control and security cameras, as is being installed in other city buildings, and cable drops for computers and network connectivity quote is also included in your packet, and that was also through a TIPS contract. The purchase of six new AED units would be through the company AED one-two-three. That's a company that we use to do monthly and annual inspections on our existing AED units. And the prices for these new units were discounted through that company. We would be adding a new AED, an additional one upstairs at City Hall, because it's a two-story building. And the recommendation is that you should be able to get to a unit and back to someone in distress within a minute's time, adding two to the conference center, and there are no existing at that building now, one to the Opera House, one to American Town Hall, and one to Visit And the staff recommends adopting the budget ordinance for the general fund for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And I could answer any questions you may have on any of the office cubicles or the furniture. We may have to get Collins up here if you want a educated explanation of the cameras and cabling and such, because I'm not the person to do that for you.
Any questions?
Aaron, is there a nothing that's not to exceed number to buy one more AED?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah.
So we propose to buy another one for the police departments.
Mayor, I just got a question for Chris. Chris, are they running CAT five or CAT, CAT five E or CAT six?
CAT six.
Because on the quote, it says CAT five E. Can we get that corrected? All right.
Other questions? Other discussion? No. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-four dash one-five, amending the operating budget for all of the items that are listed here?
Some moved.
Mr. Wadley?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That'll be approved six and oh. All opposed say nay. No nays. That's approved five and oh. Thank you, Mr. Wadley. Number seven point seven. Consider approval of Chapter three eighty sales and use tax rebate agreement for the Commerce Center of Granbury Speculative Building. I think this is you, Mr. Coughlin?
Yeah, they got duplication. Copy and paste world, isn't it? Got it up there, six. Yes, we, I have Lance Lacour, our Director of Economic Development, going to share with you a project that we're excited about, and you've already, you've already approved the first phase of the property tax abatement. So go ahead, Lance.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, and council members. This is part two of the incentives agreement for the Commerce Center of Granbury Speculative Building, which is a thirty-nine-thousand-square-foot facility being proposed on a six-acre tract in the Commerce Center, which is located next to the airport. The sales and use tax rebates would be for construction materials, fixtures, and structures used in connection with the building, using a Texas Direct Pay Sales and Use Tax certificate. The term of the sales and use tax rebate would be for two years, and the rebates would be paid after the receipts are received from the comptroller's office, and would be paid twice a year from the finance department. The agreement also includes approval of the use of existing development fee credits that Mr. Durant has on account to defray the cost of building permits, inspections, and water and wastewater fees. We're also, we've also offered phased permitting, which helps expedite the permitting process, and that's included in the agreement as well. So the suggested action is to approve the Chapter three eighty Economic Development and Sales and Use Tax Rebate Agreement and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the agreement. There is one revision that has to be made. We had February first as the inception date, and that'll have to be moved to the date of execution of the agreement.
Thank you, Lance. I might just add that Lance also worked with Precinct One Commissioner Andrews to update their policies for tax abatements to where they would be able to qualify to participate in this. And he took it to them. He probably spent forty to sixty hours working on those policies, had no charge to the county, and took it to them with their agreement. They put it on the agenda. The next item on the agenda after the policies that y'all adopted in the past two months basically were those, but only fashioned in the county format. And they took, they tabled that item and took no action on the actual incentive itself. So they're not in the mood to offer tax incentives, it sounds like to us, for projects. This is a, about a six-million-dollar building at the least, speculative investment, and if anything warrants a tax abatement, it's somebody sticking their neck out, trusting us to help them find a tenant, either a buy, lease, or fill the building with manufacturing or distribution center. So it can be expandable to a hundred-thousand feet, but it's, it's laid out very similar to one that he built in Hudson Oaks. Lance has done a good job working with Mr. Durant on this, and we're excited about the future with that. So it's going to be something at the Commerce Center actually built after the dream was to build it in two thousand and six. So things have really gone crazy, and here we are. Like, like Mr. Lee expressed, he started in two thousand and six on planned development, and he's just now getting to finish it up, so get it going and implementing part of it. So anyway, I'm, I'm just wanting to give you some color to the, the nature. We're a Lone Ranger out here on the prairie, trying to encourage jobs, creation of jobs, industrial distribution, medical, all those things that are in our strategic plan. They challenged our strategic plan of those industries at the meeting. I feel like one or more Commissioners had lined up speakers to talk against the county providing tax abatements. And so the political mood at the county right now is, we're not going to abate anything. But we're going to hit them again with another project. I'll share with you an executive session and hope they'll change their mind on that. It's a really big one. So we're just, we're just really a fish, we're in this canoe alone, folks, trying to, trying to develop our community and create jobs. And it would be really nice to have a Commissioners Court that, number one, would understand the needs to participate in our streets, and our traffic, and our transportation issues, beyond sitting at a dice and talking about it. And it would be really nice to have a Commissioners Court that would join in with our economic development efforts and, and sign on to create jobs by offering tax rebates so that we can compete with the rest of the metroplex, so our people don't, seventy percent of our workforce doesn't have to continue to drive to the metroplex to make a living. So that's my sermon, and I'll stop preaching.
Do we have questions or other comments?
Mayor, I just want to say, Lance, I appreciate all the hard work. Chris, thank you. You know, I worked at the airport for eight years, and I looked at that piece of property over there, and like a lot of people kind of scratched my head. It's like, man, this, this is such a great opportunity. We got an airport here, we got rail service here, and it's finally come to, come to fruition. So thank you for all the hard work. Chris, thank you for bringing this to, to City Council tonight. So thanks very much.
Thank you for your support.
Do I hear a motion to approve the Chapter three eighty Sales and Use Tax Rebate Agreement for Commerce Center of Granbury Speculative Building?
Some moved.
Mr. Vale makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Corrigan seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I believe that is passed five and oh. No other business here tonight. I'm going to go ahead and declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, that all members are present, with the exception of Mr. Overdeer. The City Council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following actions. We have a deliberation, or five-five-one oh eight-seven deliberation regarding economic development negotiations for discussing of Project Omaha, Iron Giant, and Project Queen Real Estate Projects. Section five-five-one point oh eight-six Certain Public Power Utilities Competitive Matters, and section five-five-one point oh seven-four Personnel Matters, City Manager Annual Review. With that, we are convened into our executive session out of our open session. I now declare the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members, with the exception of Mr. Overdeer, are present. Any action, or any, yes, Mr. Vale?
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to authorize the required newspaper publishing to hold a public hearing for a notification of a tax abatement reinvestment zone, and has set the hearing on March fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I second that.
Mr. Vale, or Mr. Wadley seconds that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
All say aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It has passed five and oh. Set all of the business for the evening, or?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
Have a motion to approve the city manager for Project sixteen dash six-five-two-three with EHT for water and sewer extension for Project Omaha.
I second that.
Mr. Wadley seconds. Mr. Vale made the motion. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It'll be five and oh. It will pass. Assume that's all.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Vale.
One more here. Make a motion to adopt the proposed city manager contract agreement as presented.
I second that.
Motion has been made. Mr. Wa- Mr. Wadley has seconded that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. There are no nays. That, too, will pass five and oh. Are there any other comments, questions, Mr. Rodriguez? No? No? There is no other business? Well, there being no other business, we are adjourned.